The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chairperson Bosher.
Here.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Colling.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Present.
Commissioner Mayo.
Here.
Commissioner Jean. Chair Bosher, would you roll call him as excused, please?
I'm sorry, you broke up. I couldn't hear you. Was that?
Commissioner Jean.
Jean, he is excused.
Thank you. And Commissioner Torres.
He is unexcused.
Thank you. Roll call is complete.
All right, we have a forum and all members in attendance will be voting tonight. And I also want to mention that I'm the only one evidently forgot the memo about the ugly sweaters. So I guess I win, whatever the prize is. Okay. I will call for a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 10th. Do we have such a motion?
I have a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Thank you both. Please cast your votes. Yay or nay? In favor? Do we need a roll call on this, Jennifer?
Yes, please. Commissioner Bosher.
Yay.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Yay.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yay.
Commissioner Colling.
Yay.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yay.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Yay.
Commissioner Mayo.
Yay.
Voting is complete. Thank you.
Very good. The minutes are approved unanimously. The only item on tonight's agenda is a presentation by the Chief Sustainability Officer, Paul Schmikein. And if I mispronounce that, please correct me. This is an informational-only presentation on the draft sustainability plan. And before we start that, I would like to welcome Counselor Hites. Excuse me if I mispronounce that also. Anytime you'd like to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, should I turn my camera on or leave it off?
Jennifer, your suggestion.
Typically, we leave cameras off during staff presentations.
Great. Thanks very much. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Paul Schmikein. I'm the city's Chief Sustainability Officer. Tonight, I'd like to give you a presentation on the draft sustainability plan. There's a couple of reasons for doing the presentation tonight. One is, again, to give you just an overview of what's been happening because this is part of Westminster Forward, which I'll talk about a little bit more, but I assume you've heard about that. The other is to take any questions or comments from the commission about the sustainability plan. Also, if you don't want to provide comments tonight, we do have a webpage where you can use an online form to submit comments. And then finally, please spread the word about the availability of the sustainability plan for public comment. So those are the main reasons why I'm appearing tonight, and I'm just going to jump in to the presentation. It should take me 15 minutes, and then after that, we'll have time for any kind of questions or comments that the commission has had. And apologies to Counselor Bowles. I believe this is the 27th time you've seen this presentation, so I'm sure you can almost deliver it by now. Matt, if you could go to the next slide? So the foundation of the sustainability plan is really the city's vision. And it's particularly the last couple of words about being sustainable and inclusive. This has been a multi-year process, but it really started about three years ago when I was first hired as the city's Chief Sustainability Officer. And at that time, in the council vision, plus the council strategic plan, which you see at the bottom of the screen, those are kind of the key pieces of that plan that relate to the city developing its first-ever sustainability plan. Next slide. So I always start off with kind of this basic definition of sustainability because everybody has their own definition. But the classic definition is really that Venn diagram on the left side of the screen where you're looking at environment, economy, and community, or sometimes equity is used. And really, the sustainability component of that is really that curvy triangle in the very middle of the Venn diagram where you're trying to hit on all those items at the same time. And so basically, kind of the simplest way I describe it is that I work on projects and programs that have economic, community, and environmental benefits. So it's really the win-win-win. You've probably heard about the triple bottom line. But really, what this is about is making Westminster an even better place to live, work, visit, and play. That's really what it comes down to. It's all about quality of life and the jobs we provide and the parks and the leisure activities that we also provide too. Next slide. So I mentioned Westminster Forward. I apologize if you've seen this 100 times, but you're going to see it 101 times now. Westminster Forward is really something that the city created probably about two years ago now to kind of bring together all of these different planning processes that are happening. And I think you'll see a lot of cities clearly work on these plans kind of individually or sometimes in isolation. But we were kind of given this opportunity to do a lot of these plans, in some cases, an update to a plan or a new plan, do them at the same time. And so we kind of lumped this under the Westminster Forward umbrella. So it's really a coordinated community engagement activity. And we did a lot of this initial community engagement back in 2019. Thank goodness we're not doing it now because it would have been almost impossible. But we did quite a lot of outreach through Latino Fest and Harvest Fest and surveys and open houses, movies in the park, all sorts of other activities. And it really was to kind of get a complete set of public input on a lot of the issues that were important to the residents. And the leaders of each of these planning processes kind of looked at those issues and kind of put them in the appropriate plan. So you'll see that the sustainability plan briefly touches on some transportation mobility plan stuff and some comp plan stuff, but it really leaves kind of the meat of those issues to be fleshed out in those individual plans. So I think the point here is that this is being done in a coordinated collaborative process, not only within the city, but also with the way that we reached out to the community to get that initial input. Next slide. So this is kind of an overview of how we approach the sustainability plan. We really see this as a multi-year strategic plan. So it looks at a lot of higher-level kind of issues that we want to look at as a city, and then also does kind of dig into some of the specific actions that we're doing. But we really see it as a living plan because, you know, if we had finished this plan a year ago, we would have completely would just would have anticipated what's been going on with COVID and the economic downturn. So we want to make sure that we update this plan as we need to and also be opportunistic. So when opportunities come along like grants or partnerships, we can kind of modify the plan and fold those new ideas into the plan. So we really want it to be kind of dynamic and not a static plan. The actual actions in the plan are really based, as I said, on community input, but also subject matter experts. The actions can also be implemented, and they're financially feasible. And this is pretty critical even before the economic downturn is that we really want to emphasize bang for the buck and return on investment for all the work that we're doing. The plan promotes accepted best practices in the field that are tailored to Westminster. So my consultant is very familiar with what's going on nationally in other cities. I'm very familiar with those same best practices, and we've kind of pulled in a lot of the ideas in the plan. But, you know, we've put the Westminster spin on it, so we make sure it's relevant to Westminster and it really speaks to the issues that the residents are interested in. The plan also creates partnerships to accomplish actions. So the city can't do this by itself. So it really becomes more of a community plan or reach out to businesses and nonprofits and residents and figure out how do we collectively accomplish this work. The plan also leverages partnerships from other partners, and this is really critical because I'm an office of two, and there's a lot of work going on in the city. And so we really need to think about how do we get our work done in partnership with others, including Xcel Energy because, you know, they'll have more money than we ever will to spend on energy efficiency and renewable energy. Next slide. So this is a little bit of a process slide in terms of how we got from where we started about two years ago to where we are now. So we hired a consultant from Fort Collins, the Brendel Group, very familiar with, as I said, sustainability plans around the country. They helped to develop a number of those. The most local plan they developed that we kind of use as a template is Longmont. So they have a very nice sustainability plan. We kind of built off of what they had done. The very first thing the Brendel Group did was they conducted like an internal assessment of city documents and talked to city staff and kind of created a state of sustainability report as far as where is the city? What are the issues that citizens are concerned about? And through that state of sustainability report, they posed a number of questions and challenges, and that really helped to set the foundation for the development of the plan. After that, we assembled a working group to develop the draft plan, and they really started with not quite a blank sheet of paper, but it was pretty close. And that working group developed that draft plan, which was completed about a year ago. And we have 14 community members, including a planning commissioner member, thank you, Commissioner Tomasek, and also 12 staff who were subject matter experts on different topic areas. So those 26 people came together in a series of meetings. There was also homework in between the meetings. And throughout that work, which was between May of 2019 and about October of 2019, they really developed the first draft of the plan. At the same time, and I had mentioned this before through Westminster Forward, we were doing a lot of public engagement and gathering ideas and information through surveys and open houses and all sorts of other events going on. After that October first draft was done, then we really began some in-depth internal discussions in terms of what's possible in the actions, what else, what might not be quite as possible, or is it being covered somewhere else? And after those internal discussions, we really came up with the first draft of the sustainability plan probably around late January, early February of 2020. And at that time, my intent was to go to city council in a presentation in late March. And then following that, we would open it up for the public comment period. Well, that got delayed a little bit for obvious reasons. And so here we are at this point where we now have a draft plan. It's probably about version 2.0. And we're right in the middle of public engagement. And part of that public engagement is talking to each of the major city boards and commissions. So I've already talked with Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Board, the Environmental Advisory Board. I'm actually talking to the Inclusivity Board on Thursday night. And then I will also talk to the Youth Advisory Panel in January. So this is kind of the phase where we're starting to kind of get some feedback from folks and try to improve the plan. Next slide. So the plan itself, I'm not going to dive into any detail on the plan. I think that's why I sent those summary documents. And if anybody's interested, we have 138-page draft plan. You want to dig into it. But there's really seven key themes that we emphasized in the plan and five cross-cutting issues. So the themes are on the left side of the screen. You can see them. Some of them going to relate either directly or indirectly to Planning Commission work. The five cross-cutting issues really are issues we felt, some of them could have been their own chapter on the left side of the screen, but we felt like they touched on all seven of those themes on the left. And so we kind of created them and thought about them in terms of education is something that cuts across all of those seven themes. Same with equity issues and climate, resilience, and safety. So this is really the way we've structured the document itself. And it took us a while to get there, but I think we're feeling pretty comfortable with this. Next slide. So I'm just going to kind of run through some really quick targets in each of the sections just to give you a flavor of what is in the document. So again, on the left side, you have a theme, and then on the right is a target we're going to be aiming for. So under energy, we're looking to get to 100% renewable electricity for the main city facilities by 2030, and we're well underway to achieve that. Under economic resilience, we're really looking to kind of create some, in fact, we're in the middle of doing this, creating a sustainable business program for the city. And that really is to help businesses save money, improve their reputation in the community, and kind of bring them together in a network. Next slide. Health and wellness. An issue that I think we all have to work on is improving regional air quality. And there's a number of projects that we've had, but this is clearly not something that Westminster controls. And so this is a great example of where we need to think about partnerships in the metro area. Housing in neighborhoods, this is really kind of the primary area of the Economic Development Department, but we work closely with them. And so they're very focused on diversity of housing types and affordable housing options in the city itself. Next slide. Materials and waste. So again, with internal city operations, we're going to improve our diversion rate to about 25%. Right now, it's around 12%, I would say. And so we know there's a number of things that we can do inside city facilities to kind of improve our recycling rates. Transportation mobility, I mentioned this is going to be covered quite a bit through the transportation mobility plan that community development is working on. But the second bullet under transportation is we're really starting to improve or increase the number of electric vehicle charging stations on and off city property. So we have one in City Hall. We have one at the Municipal Service Center. We have a number in the parking garages at Westminster Station and in downtown. But we'll look at increasing charging stations at rec centers and libraries over time. Next slide. And then finally, natural resources and environment. You know, the second bullet there is really something that's Community Development's stormwater team is working on. There's quite a bit of work that's been done, and you know, they still have a ways to go. But this is kind of a critical issue for water quality, but also stormwater issues in the city. So that's just kind of a flavor of the seven theme areas and some of the targets that we have in the plan itself. Next slide. So this is kind of what next. So I mentioned city council meeting, presentation on November 16th. And then following that, we started the public engagement process. We're using a number of tools right now. Obviously, it's a bit challenging since we can't do open houses or any kind of even a socially-distanced open house. So right now, there's a lot of virtual efforts going on, but we're going to be somewhat flexible and see what we can do to kind of engage the community in a conversation about the draft plan. We're aiming to end the public comment period at the end of January. That's, I think that'll be somewhat flexible depending on what we see with community engagement. The final plan, probably around late February, it might drift into early March, depending on how many comments we get. And then following that, possibly March, the council will receive the final plan. And that will be in a to-be-scheduled meeting. And then about one year after we finish the plan, we're going to start reporting on progress. And we'll probably report on progress through a number of tools, especially dashboards. And so this is a way for the community and also, you know, city staff to see where we're doing well, where we're falling short, where we need to improve. And so we want to get into a bit of a rhythm with doing dashboards around the sustainability plan progress. And the next slide, I think, is questions. Questions. So that was about 15 minutes or so. So I'd like to open it up as long as we want, as long as we have time, for any kind of questions from the commission or comments. I'll take anything at this time. As I said, if you'd like to think about the plan itself and make comments, there is an online form on the city's website, and we can make sure that that link gets out to everybody. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Paul. And just for future reference, can you give us the correct pronunciation of your name, your last name?
Sure. It's very German, so it's Schmikein.
Schmikein. Thank you. And I'd like to also mention before we move on, I need to make a correction and an apology to Counselor Bowles. I don't know what I was doing. I was channeling an old council, I guess. And thank you for coming to our meeting, Counselor. With that, I will ask any commissioners if you have any questions. Richard, you have a question?
I have a question.
Or it's?
Just very quickly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was hearing in the report that 80% of renewable energy for municipal facilities by 2030, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a plan for residents, or how will that work?
That is a great question. So fortunately, we have a very aggressive utility that serves Westminster. Xcel Energy has been doing a lot, and we partner with them quite extensively. I would say for residents, what we're doing right now is that we're going to be improving the information on our website about what residents can do to purchase solar, whether they want to purchase solar on their roofs, if they wanted to buy into something called a community solar garden. So we're going to be working with residents on renewable energy issues. We also, we have been working and will be continuing to work with residents on energy efficiency to make their homes more efficient, to save money, to make the homes more comfortable. So there's a number of things that we're doing with residents, and we'll, I think we're going to be doing quite a bit more in 2021 and 22. The other piece, too, is also on the business side, is that we want to kind of engage the businesses in those same conversations to help businesses save money on their energy bills and kind of just cut their greenhouse gas emissions and all the other benefits with renewable energy and also being more energy efficient. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Mayo, did you have a question?
No, did not.
Okay. I saw your mic on. I thought that could be an indication. Any of the commissioners have a question? Just go ahead and turn on your mic and ask it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the presentation. I have several comments and questions, so there's a few. This may take a few minutes here. First, first, I appreciate that so much of this plan is, seems to be voluntary or part of the city's processes and is not, does not seem to be, you know, using the heavy hand of government to force an outcome. So I just wanted to put that bit of appreciation. That's, you know, that really does fit with the us having a quality of life and a better place to live here. So I just want to thank you for that. Secondly, my first question is going to be something that really relates to land use, and that's going to be in the area where you're talking about health. I read on the summary sheet and also in the plan itself about food deserts and food swamps. Now, I didn't know what a food swamp was, so I Googled that. So a food swamp is basically where you've got, you know, liquor stores and convenience stores and fast food. So basically, businesses. So I really have a problem with us trying to say, let's not have businesses out there. So, and that's at least the occurring I'm getting from reading your documents. So I'd really like to hear your comments on why we should be more severely limiting the types of businesses we have in our city.
I think the issue is not to limit the businesses, but to encourage other businesses to come in that could offer more healthy food issues, food options, sorry. So I think the issue is what you see a lot with some neighborhoods that might only be able to rely on convenience stores. They have good food sometimes in convenience stores, but they don't always provide things like fruits and vegetables. So I think the issue is more, being more encouraging as a city about how do we attract businesses that might offer a wider range of healthier food options in those neighborhoods that really don't have those options right now. So it's not about excluding businesses. It's about attracting new ones.
Okay, okay, I got that. And that's a completely different context. So my recommendation would be, instead of saying discouraging food swamps, maybe you should put it in the positive and more on the encouragement side as opposed to discouraging businesses. That would be my comment regarding that.
Yeah, thanks. Great comment.
Yep. Secondly, you know, there were some, there is a talk in there in the residential building especially about encouraging sustainable building materials. Now, wood can be a sustainable building material since it's farmed and built. But what in your world does sustainable building materials contain and stuff like that?
It would probably be in the area, Mr. Commissioner, it'd be in the area of more building materials that last longer. And I think one of the ways that we would look into this, and this is, forgive me, I don't remember the exact page that this is on, but Community Development is going through an update of the Development Code right now. And so I'm working pretty closely with the community development staff to figure out, well, what additional items could we possibly incorporate into the Development Code that gets to the issue of these sustainable building materials? I mean, I don't know, we're probably not going to go this far, but some communities kind of talk about wanting materials to be used that are within, say, 500 miles of the location. Those are like local materials, so you're helping more local businesses, and you're not transporting materials across the country. So I don't think it'll kind of get to that level, but that's just an example of some things that have been used elsewhere. But really, it's about longer-lasting materials that are quality materials. And then, of course, you've got to balance that out with the cost of those materials. And then, of course, you've got to balance that out with the cost of those materials. So I think a lot of what you talked about, the city is gonna be looking at through the update to the the development code.
Okay, all right. Got it. Got it. Okay. And then, and then the, the other portion I'm going to touch on that really I, I had, I want to talk about the, the transportation portion of this. I'll say I'm a civil engineer. Uh, I work more in land development professionally than in traffic engineering, but of course, everyone's, uh, everyone's kind of an amateur traffic engineer around here. Uh, I, I have, I have a couple of, uh, statements about that. Uh, number one, you've uh, per the, one of the surveys, uh, pre-COVID at least, uh, most of our commuters, uh, eighty percent, uh, seventy-nine percent, uh, drove a single person car, I think, car, if you add carpooling and transit, uh, that all you city streets are up to like ninety-two percent. But but what, what it, what the plan said is that you're going to take the transportation and split it equit- equally between all, all things and, you know, and while I am a proponent of infrastructure and even pedestrian oriented infrastructure and even bike lanes when they make sense, they, you know, I, you know, that's, I think finishing our city sidewalk network and connecting our trails is important. But to split our funding equity, uh, equally, I should say, between between bicycles, cars, and, I'm sorry, bicycles, cars and pedestrians, when ninety-two percent of vehicles use the streets makes makes very little sense and is not equitable at all. So that, it, I believe that language should be changed to, to reflect because the, you know, adding more bike lanes where and do road diets and things of that nature increase pollution, increase congestion, which increases pollution and and decreases the quality of life and it would, and it would be against your, the quality of life and a better place to live. Also, the, I am strongly opposed to joining, uh, the buzzword bit Vision Zero, uh, which it, yes, you can get to zero traffic deaths, just make the speed limits five miles an hour, then nobody will die if they get hit. But the trade offs are huge. So there's a, I, I'm philosophically opposed to Vision Zero and I don't believe we should be going in that direction. So if you could address, uh, both the need, the transportation needs of of the ninety-two percent of people who use vehicles to get around, vehicles that are not bicycles or, or their own feet. And, and, uh, get rid of the vision, minimize or get rid of the Vision Zero, I would appreciate that.
So just a quick response on that is that those two items are actually being addressed in the Transportation Mobility Plan. And what you just described with your first question is called kind of the mode share, what percent people drive, bike, a walk? And, uh, the Transportation Mobility Plan is gonna be addressing that. And we definitely did not say that equal funding should go to biking, pedestrian and and vehicles, because that's what the Transportation Mobility Plan is figuring out. What will happen is that once that plan is done and they finalize whatever is gonna be in that plan, we'll go back and modify the sustainability plan. So they're speaking to one another, so they're all aligned well. Uh, and then on the Vision Zero piece, that's something that's up for conversation in the Transportation Mobility Plan right now too. And I don't know what the latest is on that, but I've got your comments and I will definitely pass them on to, uh, the team working on that plan.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, I, I live in countryside and we've, you know, I know we're very auto oriented over here and we've, you know, just over on Sims, one block over, we have sidewalk that's never been completed to, so there, there are lots of, there are lots of opportunities where we can improve pedestrian connections. But, and I def- and I, I was sure I read that it was going to be equally split and if I, if that was not the intent, then then I, I get that. So thank you. I believe that those were all of my questions at this point, uh, comments. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks, Commissioner.
Commissioner McConnell, did you have a comment or question?
Um, probably a little bit of both, Commissioner Boshard, but thank you. Um, so Paul, thank you for putting this together. I found it, um, pretty informative. And for a moment, if we could, I'd like to go back to the energy question.
Sure.
I, I agree, I believe that striving for eighty percent of renewable electricity, but for municipal that is entirely doable in ten years. That, that's believable to me. However, to be a hundred percent renewable electricity, but community wide by twenty forty across the entire state, there are things out of the city's control. There are going to be things out of the state's control, starting with what kind of reserves do we have for all of, for copper, for example, uh, rare earth metals? Uh, anything that goes into a solar panel or wind turbine, right? Who controls most of the rare earth metals on earth? China, sixty percent, I think, is their share of the market. We have a very, very we have one rare earth metal mine in the United States. Uh, copper, I have, uh, uh, I graduated from Colorado School of Mines, so I have a lot of friends still involved in the industry. And right now, for us to go as a country to one hundred percent renewable, we are oh, a little bit below in copper reserves. While we would need to do that, by a little bit below, I mean five hundred percent roughly. So that, that's gonna be a challenge and an issue. And then last but not least is how do we store this renewable energy to make this a viable plan to reach in twenty years?
Commissioner, you're, you're right, great comments. Uh, one hundred percent by twenty forty will be a challenge, but again, that's kind of the state's goal and we wanted to align with the state, uh, rather than I mean, the interesting story is XL Energy is doing some pretty interesting things on renewable calculating that they're gonna be at sixty-two percent renewable electricity by twenty thirty. And it, you know, if ten years ago, if you had kind of told me that XL was gonna be at that level by twenty thirty, I would have said you're crazy. And so XL is really pushing hard and and I've talked with a few of the XL people and they said, you know, look, there's some technology changes that are needed, but if it's possible, it's quite likely they'll be at twenty forty by, or a hundred percent by twenty forty. I mean, they're not promising that. Their promise is a hundred percent by twenty fifty, but if it's feasible and technically feasible, they're all in.
Yeah, I read, uh, an interesting article earlier today, you know, kind of in preparation for this meeting and was called like P two, was it power to gas, P two G? Are you familiar with that? Well, I, I, I've only been familiar with it for about an hour and a half, so. But, but what they were talking about was using, using, burning, essentially using the renewable energy to create hydrogen gas and then storing the hydrogen gas used later as an energy source.
Yes, exactly.
Who knew? And one, one last thing I had, and this would be in the, the materials and waste section. I know a few years ago, um, the city was moving towards thinking about taking overall waste collection within the city to increase the amount of, uh, I guess in here we're calling it, uh, residential waste diversion. Is that, and I see that that's a near term and ongoing timeline, is, is potentially the plan there for, uh, waste collection to become a city service?
Uh, no, it's not. And, and that proposal from about, uh, it's almost four years ago, was, uh, was not for the city to take over the waste services, but to contract with a smaller number of haulers than we actually have.
That's right. My, my mistake, you're correct.
The city council didn't approve that. We don't have plans to do anything like that. Most of the waste diversion work we're gonna do with residents is around education and information. And so we're working on a number of possibilities, uh, because, you know, that does come up or that did come up in our Westminster Forward surveys is the thing that people are most interested about in the city. It's easily recycling and composting. So we hear that over and over again. So nothing, uh, grandiose. It's gonna be more on the education and information side to help kind of work within the system that we have.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Mayo, do you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments and questions. On the type of businesses, that issue that came up at the beginning here, if the demand is here, or if the demand is there, wouldn't the businesses naturally come and naturally migrate to those areas where the demand is? I mean, trying to force fit something where there's no demand and a little demand seems to fail.
Are you talking about the food issue that we were talking about with, uh, Commissioner Carpenter earlier?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Yeah, this is, you're, you're exactly right. That's kind of that issue we're gonna have to look at. So the Economic Development Department is really the one leading that along with, uh, kind of our homeless coordinator, uh, who's in Parks, Wreck and Library. And so this isn't something that we can just snap our fingers and make it happen overnight. You've got to do like the market analysis and understand who might be willing to come in and, and offer those kind of food services. So this is not like a, a quick answer. It's, it's gonna take a while to do this and, you know, a number of cities have tackled this and it, it just takes a while.
Right, but that comes back to my question at hand. It was if the demand was there and if the residents in that area wanted it, we wouldn't have to be going out and trying to recruit businesses to come in and provide those services. Businesses would be standing in line to come in and provide those services. I mean, one of the most recent examples on this end of town, I'm in the southwest Westminster, is that local foods market. There never was any demand for something like that. And a bunch of people got together, I shouldn't even say a bunch, but a handful of people got together and tried to force fit that into an area that there was no demand for that.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, another example that hits close to home here, um, that basically sixty-eighth and Sheridan, it's probably been half a dozen, eight years, but they built a high-end steakhouse to try to run, to try to compete with Elway's in Shanahan. But Sixty-eighth and Sheridan, somebody again tried to force fit something that there wasn't any demand for. If there was demand for it, it would have been there.
Right.
So, you know, that didn't even make it past their soft opening, I don't think.
Yeah, and there, I didn't, I clicked on this earlier. I mean, there are other ways to look at this issue too, um, around kind of food, access to healthy food, which is maybe it's community gardens. Maybe it's kind of another model that is more neighborhood based and you get, um, you know, residents wanting to kind of use a parcel of land and create community garden in that area. I mean, we've got about three or four community gardens on city property right now. But maybe a community garden is a, a better example of what might be possible in the area. So I think th- there's a pretty broad set of options to think about. How do you provide healthy food? And I'm not the expert in the area. I think this is what kind of our park staff person is very well versed in, along with our economic development folks.
Well, but if we get, you know, let's take this off the, you know, the food track and let's look at the bike lanes. Ninety percent of the people are driving cars. There really is minimal demand for bike lanes. And the bike lanes that are, you know, off the beaten path, off the shoulders, through the parks, I mean, there's, those are wonderful. Bike lanes that are disrupting traffic and taking up traffic lanes are in my mind, a disaster. I mean, I drive around and very seldom do you ever see anybody using a bike lane. But it has the traffic that are driving their vehicles paranoid because it's hard to make a right-hand turn because you're afraid that there's gonna be somebody in this bike lane, but you should know better because there's never anybody in that bike lane. But the one time, you know, you don't look out for that, sure enough, someone will be there. But we're disrupting traffic patterns that most of the people use to try to force something that there's no demand for. If there was a demand for it, they would be full. There would be all kinds of people using the bike lanes.
So, so that issue, it's being addressed through the Transportation Mobility Plan and also the Parks Plan. And also based on what we've heard from the residents, bike lanes and bike trails come out really high. You know, we've heard this through the Westminster Forward sessions. This is what, you know, a fair number of the people like. So I think we're trying to respond to what we're hearing from the public, but also what's reasonable and practical. So I, I kind of think about the Transportation Mobility Plan is where you're gonna see that really play out.
Okay, I've attended several of those meetings and what I heard was the bike trails people really like. But the bike lanes that are competing with the traffic, I, not in those meetings that I was in were people positive on those. They love the trails. But bike lane, you know, being a mode of transportation on the streets, you know, uh, the demand is not there. And, you know, again, we're trying to force something that if the demand was there, we wouldn't have to force it. People would be jumping up and down and as soon as you opened it, you'd cut the ribbon and there'd be so many people in it. But, you know, go out on any given day and look at these bike lanes that are competing with traffic. They're empty. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to pick on bike lanes. I mean, the, the whole underlying gist to my comments is if there's demand for something, it would naturally progress to fruition. You might be able to help it a little bit, nudge it, but it would naturally happen if the demand was to try to sit back and think of what people want. And then to give them what you think they want is a recipe for failure.
Okay, I think I got it. I think I got your comments.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry to interrupt.
No worries. And I'll, I will pass these on to the folks working on the Transportation Mobility Plan too.
Do we have any other comments from other commissioners? I would like to make one quick comment on bike lanes. What I've read and what seems to work best in both urban and suburban is when bike lanes are separated from traffic. And then they do get used extensively because the bikes are safe from any interaction with the automobiles. So that's my only comment on that. So do we have any other commissioners who wish to comment? It looks like, uh, Counselor Bowles would like to comment.
Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah, I just want to say, Paul, thank you for this presentation and I've heard it a couple of times um, through the Environmental Advisory Board and a couple of times on council. And thank you for presenting this. And this is the first time we've ever had a sustainability plan. So I just want to say, um, that, uh, I thank the commissioners for having this presentation and having this public hearing. I think we've had some really good comments, so I think, uh, I'm sure Paul's taken really good notes. We'll share that with council and, uh, I think this is a really good step in the right direction. So I really like the community resilience part because we're right now in the middle of a, a, you know, a COVID pandemic. And the community resilience is really important and it's part of this plan and I, and then also the neighborhood connection. So I think you've done a lot of great work here, Paul and, uh, Mr. Schmeken, I should say. And I want to thank commissioners for, um, their input and I think everyone had really good comments tonight. So thank you. And this is the first ever sustainable, sustainability plan for our city and I think it's a great step in the right direction. So I just wanted to thank all the commissioners for their input and for their time and then thank Paul for his efforts. So and all of his hard work. So thank you. And that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you, counselor. And I would also like to compliment Paul on the presentation. I think it's great that the city of Westminster is thinking along these lines, sustainability. This is probably the first iteration, so it will improve as time goes on. And we needed to start somewhere and this is a good start. So thank you again, Paul. And if there are no other comments, I would like to adjourn the meeting.
Great. Thank you, commissioners. Have a great evening.
Commissioner Bosscher, before we go, I just wanted to let everybody know that this is our final meeting for the year. So happy holidays to everybody. We will have a planning commission meeting on January twelfth, 2021. And we will be bringing back the pre-meeting. That will give you guys the opportunity to ask staff any questions prior to our meeting. So I just wanted to give you all a heads up that we are going to be bringing that back for that meeting. And we will be moving forward with the pre-meeting again in the future. So that's all I have for everybody. And thank you for your time. Good night.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer and Matt. And good night, everybody.
Happy holidays. Good night.